Algo que se me olvidó mencionar muy importante, como sabes, es tener una área nueva adentro del complejo de Prorista, con sacatito bien bonito y la señora Coronado ha pedido actores para donarlos, para plantarlos, únicamente nosotros donando y ella los apunta también.
Y todos los ceros tienen.
Y todos los ceros tienen las 7 de la mañana, se ponen todo mis agradecimientos. Y no menos, la señora Carmen Ortiz, también como coincidencia entra y sale juntas, las clases que toman una turma a la otra, y el motivo principal de esto es decir, las feranías de Socorro están beneficiando de las actividades y las acciones del Consilio y de la ciudad de Socorro. Señor Soto, es una cosa la condición, y es un proyecto bueno, y lo prueba, y ustedes igualmente, se los parece a todo corazón, la señora también tomamos las clases con presión, gracias a que la señora Basía, al señor Martí, la señora Rodríguez, al señor Ganda, donaron dinero de su discretionary bank. A ver, preguntar, ¿a dónde se va el dinero? Se va a la gente de Socorro. Tenemos siempre computadoras nuevas, teléfonos nuevos, y un sistema de dar contra dar, y fuego nuevo gracias a ese dinero que ustedes aceptaron a que se usara en ese sentido, gracias. Señora Ortiz quiere, por todo lo que usted hace, por ese personal, y mi siguiente parte de los procesos que él, en la acción y el respeto, y se lo prestó, y gracias. Y entre parte de las señoras de Socorro, y las señoras de. Cuando normalmente un barco surca con un mar tranquilo y hay resultados cuando llega al otro puerto, hay un capitán. Y ese capitán en estos años pasados ha sido, se llamaba, ya muy bueno, que cada año, cada día, no se conoce pero la sequimera está ahí para darles instrucción de aeróbicos y de baile. Entonces, por eso también será un renunciamiento de parte de ustedes, a la de Ana Primo, por todo lo que hace, como ciudadanos, a la de Ana, y Sabas.
Moving on to item number seven, public hearing on an ordinance of the city of Socorro, Texas formally establishing processes, procedures, rules and regulations in operation and administration of the municipal court of the city of Socorro.
The hearing now starts at 6:60.
Get the procedure.
Any speakers on this item?
Yeah. Public hearing starts at 6:60.
Moving on to item number eight, public hearing on the city of Socorro's property tax report. Do you have any speakers for this item?
Public hearing starts at 6:60.
Any speakers for this item?
Public hearing starts at 6:17.
Moving on to the consent agenda. Have a motion to approve? Have a motion and a second to approve? We do have speakers on some of these items now before we take the record. For item number 11, this is.
Mayor, may I recommend that you vote on the rest of the council, except the agenda, except for items 11 and 12, which we have speakers for.
Okay, I would recommend that we make a motion for consent agenda. We accept for items 11 and 12. Motion to vote on all the items to be taken.
11 and 12, for which we have speakers for.
We have a motion and a second. Gabriel Madrid?
Yes.
Mary Garcia?
Yes.
Maria Reyes? Consent agenda is approved, 11 and 12 are moved out.
Moving on to. Discussion and action on approval of a certification of a support signing in zoning commission 29, the proposed rezoning of Patch 9, 98, 14A, 14B, 15 and 16C, Block 12, so-called grant from R2000 residential to residential to R3, high density residential to R3, high density residential.
Our first speaker is Ms. Dora Reyes. And then you have three minutes.
Well, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I'll begin as a sample. I just, plain and simple, I have a home that surrounds that developing area, and I'm attached to insurance, but really, I wasn't, they weren't, my questions at that time before were not really answered, so I'm just really against it, I don't, the traffic, the schools are full, and I even know they, because they're saying they're going to have some other access roads to pass more in Alameda or even on Peters, you know, it doesn't alleviate the traffic, the problem that we have with traffic, you know, it's really horrendous, especially in the morning and the afternoon, we have two schools in between, which is in San Diaz and then in Alasterna, and I just don't see, just putting more homes there is just going to cause more problems, more traffic problems, not just, and with the schools like, well, you know, I farm around that area, and I'm concerned as well as how will that affect the farming, because I'm just kind of cornered in that, in that section right there, you know, so I'm kind of enclosed, I'll be enclosed if they continue with their development and stuff, so, you know, a lot of people that I've spoken to have the same feeling, and they just do not want to see more added homes there, just because, for the simple fact, more to them is just the traffic that goes through there, it takes very long time just to cross from Socorro Road to Alameda, to pass more, and even just to get onto the, towards the border freeway, you know, it's just so much of the tech and, you know, and I'm against it, I'm against the rezoning of that area. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Trini Lopez.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Lopez, your presence. Thank you, sir. Trini Lopez, 925 Socorro Road, the senior Socorro resident. I'm here to ask you to please consider to accept the recommendation by the zoning commission to deny, due to the fact that there is a R2 which is density residential, now they're asking for high density residential, it will be affecting tremendously, not only in my state like Alameda and all that, but that topic has affected both, they're going to pass or actually go through Socorro, and it will affect everybody, therefore, I respectfully ask you to accept their recommendation and coming as zoning commission to deny. Thank you very much.
No more speakers?
No more speakers, Mr. Lopez.
Council, do they have a motion to deny or have a motion to deny?
We have a motion on the floor to deny, and a second. Gabriel Madrid?
Yes, sir.
Mary Garcia?
Yes.
Maria Reyes?
Yes.
Item number 11 is denied.
Moving on, moving on to item 12, discussion and action to approve the way fees for Socorro High School will come in for the parade on September 1st, 2011.
We have one speaker for this item, Mr. Deyda Rodriguez. Mr. Rodriguez, you have three minutes.
I just was here to represent the bottom, I didn't have a lot on the new student activities right here, and I was here because the time had changed, usually we have it at 5 o'clock, but this time it's been moved to 6 o'clock, just to present that change on the court.
Do the mayor, man, what, what, tell us a little about this activity.
Okay, our homecoming will able to place on September 1st, and it'll go the usual route, starting on Horizon behind the Autozone up into Socorro High School. Our big thing this time is that our whole thing, our homecoming will actually take place on our Socorro field, 9% for the first time in over 10 years. So, it's a big event, and we're really excited about it, and the parade is the kickoff to that meeting.
And what's the participation of the city?
The city, I asked all the theater, well, to waive the fee, that's what we're asking the city, but all the theater patterns are involved in the parade, and of course, the city would have to approve the blocking of the street.
And will we have a cloak?
Oh, you can definitely have a cloak, you know, we would love for you guys to be part of it, yes, and you can just contact me and let me know so I can put you on the list, definitely. Thank you.
Thank you, continue. You want to, that's also going to be a. Well, the clothes for the city council are right now.
Thank you. Council, if there are motion to approve.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve, item number 12, Gabriel Madrid?
Yes.
Mary Garcia?
Yes.
Maria Reyes?
Yes.
Okay, item number 12 is approved.
Moving on to regular attendance.
Mayor, may I ask you to move on item 27, we have a distinguished representative of the gas company here who would speak to this item, so let's see, may.
Just that one? Okay, council, I recommend to move item 27 to 3490. Okay, to 27 up, 490.
Do we have a second? We have a motion on the floor, second is by Maria Reyes. Gabriel Madrid?
Yes.
Mary Garcia?
Yes.
Maria Reyes? Now, item number 27 is moved out.
Item 27, discussion and action for court resolution regarding the request of such a debt service company for interim rate adjustment dated May 30, 2011, according to Texas Utility Code Section 104.31, DRIP.
Mayor, council, it's my pleasure to introduce Mr. Pete Barata, reintroduce him to you. He's been a longtime representative of Texas Gas Service, a leader in the community, and someone that I've known for quite some time, so with that, I'd like to proceed.
Mayor, council, I am the product, I am with Texas Gas Service. What this interim adjustment is, basically, this was filed with the Ciudad Pastoral and all the fights around the communities of the service, what we call the pastoral services. An interim rate adjustment is actually a state statute that allows gas utilities throughout the state of Texas to adjust rates, to increase rates, but only when capital investments have been made in the system. This is not for future investments in the system, okay? And because it is only for capital, we only include, if you want to call it pipe in the ground. Normally, what we do is the other cities including the city of Socorro, allow the Ciudad Pastoral to go ahead and negotiate the request. The original request was to increase the average residential rate by 34 cents a month. We have completed our negotiations with the Ciudad Pastoral, and we set about 31 cents a month. Some of the improvements that is included in this particular interim rate increase are improvements that we did in Con Valley Estates, also magnitude, and other areas within the city of Socorro and the surrounding community, and we're asking for your approval.
Based on Mr. Wallace's bill, there's a negotiation, are there any motions to approve?
We have a motion on the floor to approve, and a second. Gabriel Madrid?
Yes.
Mary Garcia?
Yes.
Maria Reyes?
Yes.
Item number 27 is approved.
Thank you very much.
Moving on to item 19. Introduction, first reading and comment for a public hearing on the ordinance of the city of Socorro, Texas, and further authorizing the public office to perform the actual amendment and collection of said property taxes on behalf of the city of Socorro, Texas, for the fiscal year commencing October 1st, 2011, and ending September 30th, 2012.
You're now meeting standards, say, this item is approved for a reading without discussion for you to vote on that basis. Because the, excuse me, because the public will have their say in the second reading, and you'll have, your dialogue will be in the second reading.
We have a motion on the floor, we have a second. Motion and a second, Gabriel Madrid?
Yes.
Mary Garcia?
Yes.
Maria Reyes?
Yes.
Item number 19 is approved.
Moving on to items 21, introduction, first reading and comment for a public hearing on the ordinance of the city of Socorro, Texas, about the amendment of the city charter for the city.
Mayor, council, same procedure.
We have a motion and a second. Gabriel Madrid?
Yes.
Mary Garcia?
Yes.
Maria Reyes?
Yes.
Item number 20 is approved.
Moving on to item 1, first, introduction, first reading and comment for a public hearing on the ordinance of the city of Socorro, Texas, about the amendment of the charter for the city.
Mayor, council, same procedure.
Do we have second? Gabriel Madrid?
Yes.
Mary Garcia?
Yes.
Maria Reyes?
Yes.
Item number 21 is approved.
With the, with the kind of, Mr. Lopez, if you want to.
When you get your exhibits for the next regular meeting, the Monday before the meeting, it'll be there.
All right, thank you. Moving on to item 22, second reading and adoption of the ordinance for the city of Socorro, Texas, formally establishing processes, procedures, rules and regulations in operation and administration of the municipal court of the city of Socorro.
Mayor, council, our attorney, please, for that.
Okay, this is a rather long ordinance, but it does do a lot different from what you've already been doing, but what it does is, it establishes a procedure for what you've been doing, how you've been operating the courts in Socorro, so, much of what's in the ordinance is by state statutes, but it's all collected in one location, there are some state statutes that say you are supposed to have this type of ordinance, we were recently in some litigation where there were some questions asked about whether or not the city had a system for jury trials and so forth and so on, the city in fact had a system, but it didn't have an ordinance written down so that we could present it to the court and say, yes, your honor, here it is, here's an ordinance setting forth all the rules and regulations and how the court will operate and work, we have prepared this ordinance to do that, we've renewed it with your municipal judge to make sure that what's in this ordinance is the way that the court has been doing these things, number one. Number two, we have incorporated the fees and penalties that the court has levied in the way of jury fees and so forth and so on, $20, the initial fee that was listed in the, in the form of the ordinance which we secured to create this name was $6, and municipal judge said, I can't even have a cut of the jury for $6. So, also, the, in the initial ordinance form, the, there was a limitation not to permit a payment schedule or fines of more than 180 days, we have historically done payment schedules longer than that, so we extended that to 360 days as opposed to 180. And the only other thing that represents a change from the initial form presented to you is that in the section that provided for the collection of fines and penalties, we added the state statutory language, which says that you can do that by arresting the person for failure to pay their fine, and give the fines in lieu of incarceration, that you can utilize a collection agency, now that's authority to utilize a collection agency, you don't have to, it doesn't mandate, it just simply says you can, if you choose to do so, or you can set up some kind of payment schedule, or you can do it through levying on the individual's assets, if you can locate the asset, so it puts you in the same position, basically, as any other creditor that an individual owes an amount of money to, with the exception that if there is a jail penalty that goes along with the fine, and that is, probation on that is conditioned upon payment of the fine, then that can be levied or utilized as punishment for failure to pay the fine. Other than that, it's exactly the form that was provided to you, and is consistent with the procedures that have been utilized in your city court. The, we have had an extensive review by your municipal judge to make sure that's the case, so we feel comfortable in saying that we don't think it will change your existing procedures, but it will enable us if we get in the same situation in the future to go to the court and say, yes, your honor, we do have a procedure for this. The only thing that I would say, and we tried our best to do this, this involves a number of state statutes in this type of thing, we have, where we could, we have indicated that it's the amount established by statute, we indicated the current amount, and then the amount, or the amount established by statute, we've also included within the ordinance just a section which says that to the extent that fines and penalties and the division of fines and penalties as between the city of Socorro and the state of Texas should be changed by statute, it is the intent and purpose of this ordinance to be consistent with the statute, so that if, if for some instance, there are various situations where we have to divide fines and penalties between the city of Socorro and the state, should that situation be changed by state statute, we have included that language so that your ordinance would change with the state statute.
So, in other words, you're saying that we don't have to change it per se, it goes along with state statute.
We tried our best to grab it in a way where, when state statute moves, your ordinance will move with it.
Right.
Council, we have a, we have a question.
We have a motion to approve, seconded by Mary Garcia. Gabriel Madrid?
Yes.
Mary Garcia?
Yes.
Troy Rodriguez?
Yes.
Maria Reyes?
Yes.
Jesse Ganda?
Yes.
Item number 22 is approved.
Moving on to item 23, discussion and action to approve a verified travel expenditure for four police officers to attend the techniques for this 811 speech seminar, from August 10th through the 12th in San Luis, Texas.
Motion to approve?
I have a question. Do you, this is back of already encouraged without the approval?
I apologize.
Is this legal?
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, I want, I want to keep gratifications or after the fact to a minimum, and I'm already in discussion with department heads, this, both 23 and 24, were a very good training opportunity for our police department staff that went, and, but we didn't get identification of these opportunities until just recently, so what I'm going to be working with department heads is to understand a four to six month planning calendar, so they look at, in that timeframe, if they're going to be, going to request, to go to special development opportunity in the future, so that we got them out there forecasted much further out, so we don't end up in a gratification process, or to try to keep that to absolute minimum, because I believe you should approve before it actually happens.
We have a motion to approve, do we have a second?
Yes.
By Mary Garcia. Gabriel Madrid?
Yes.
Mary Garcia?
Yes.
Maria Reyes?
No.
Jesse Ganda?
Yes.
Item number 23 is approved.
Moving on to item 24, discussion and action to approve a verified travel expenditure for two police dispatch employees to attend the TLPTS and LPTS data procedures seminar from August 8th to August 10th, 2011, in Fort Worth, Texas.
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion by Jesse Ganda, seconded by Mary Garcia, to approve. Gabriel Madrid?
Yes.
Mary Garcia?
Yes.
Maria Reyes?
Yes.
Jesse Ganda?
Yes.
Item number 24 is approved.
Going on to a number to the regular agenda, item 26, introduction, first reading and comment by a public hearing on the ordinance of the city council, of the city of Socorro, Texas, approving a tariff change as requested in the capacity, we are having this application to approve to revise a tariff, city for yet, new lettering, provisions filed with the city and fighting, in determining that the leading of which this ordinance was considered was open to the public and the court to speak this law.
Mayor, before we move on, would you please, no ticket, represent.
Sorry, is, would I, to recognize.
Katie Cook, noted there.
I don't, I prefer to say from the recorder, but still, Mr. Ganda is here, welcome, for the event, we're recognizing you. And so, is this one?
Your standard procedure.
Okay. Council, we have, a motion to approve?
Second. We have a motion to approve and a second. Gabriel Madrid?
Yes.
Mary Garcia?
Yes.
Maria Reyes?
Yes.
Jesse Ganda?
Yes.
Okay, item number 26 is approved.
Item 27, we would like to.
Mayor, can we go back on item 25, have it deleted?
Motion to delete item 25?
Second. We have a motion and a second. Gabriel Madrid?
I'm busy. I'm, I speak for myself. We're going after the table.
Yes.
Mary Garcia?
Yes.
Maria Reyes?
Yes.
Jesse Ganda?
Yes.
Item number 25 is deleted.
Motion to move to executive session?
Actually, it's not 27.
No. We're already in session, we don't.
Oh, you approve this?
Yes. Motion to move to executive session?
Yes.
Second. We have a second time?
Yes.
Gabriel Madrid?
Yes.
Mary Garcia?
Yes.
Maria Reyes?
Yes.
Jesse Ganda?
Yes.
Okay, we move into executive session at 6:41. Okay, we move into executive session at six forty-one.